John, they're in the memo that I provided, it says the bridge number and its location. What we're doing, I can talk about, I can talk about for hours how to construct them, how to build.
Exactly.
We have all kinds of fun times.
All right.
But I think you've got a lot to do, you'd probably rather hear about something else. The moral of this story is I'm budgeting what the amount is we expect to bring in using the cash balance that we anticipate to be left.
And leveraging the dollars for.
Leveraging federal aid dollars.
Yeah.
Continue to apply for more federal aid dollars because those are eighty twenty on bridges.
To me, this is pretty, this is pretty easy because it's.
You're right, no, I agree.
There's, there's hardly anything that.
Is that a motion?
Taken away, nope, taken away from this. If we take, but I'm saying, taking away from this hurts you.
Oh, yeah.
There's no reduction that can happen because if we do do any reductions in this, it'll mess up your federal matches and everything.
They're not all federally funded.
But, but, yeah.
That's exactly what happens.
I just want to make sure.
Some of these are being locally designed, so a hundred percent out of Kuhn Bridge, we paid for design to submit for federal aid and construction and inspection. So Bridge eighty-four, that's what we've done. So we paid for local design, put it up for federal aid, we can build it a lot faster and we, we can save some money on design in the big picture of tax dollars. Yes, it costs local dollars more, but it saves a lot of federal process because it's much shorter in design using local dollars. So a variety of different uses for this, for this fund, using the advice from our consultant that did our asset, look at all of our assets, put our capital improvement plan together for all of our.
No, that's fine. And Debbie, I know we probably, we won't have to come back to this, I'm assuming, eleven thirty-five?
No.
That's what I thought. All right, I move that we approve eleven thirty-five, I submit.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Um, I don't, I didn't submit twelve twenty-nine, so I assume I don't need to talk about it, there's going to be nothing left in it. Fifty-nine hundred's the same way, that's economic development. Ninety-one ninety-four, we needn't talk about it at all because I didn't submit because we don't actually have any revenue. We skipped three of them right there.
Awesome.
Yeah, moving right ahead to eleven fifty-seven, so food and beverage. So we're all like loom and doom and nothing's getting any more revenue. Eleven fifty-seven actually does, so the price of food goes up, the price of alcohol goes up, that's a percentage, it goes into food and beverage. So lunch you're buying in Boone County, I think, is lunch.
How much is that budget needs, alcohol goes up?
Yeah. Start showing it, budget needs.
Nice.
I love that.
Nice.
So eleven fifty-seven continues to get more revenue annually and it's, it's gone up significantly since even before COVID, during COVID, and now after COVID. And with our other reductions in revenue and flat revenue of the other funds, this one, we continue to try to move our road preservation and equipment dollars to eleven fifty-seven, so we budgeted the equipment for twenty twenty-four at four hundred and seventy, four hundred and seventy-one thousand dollars. The amount for twenty twenty-three was six hundred and forty. This is based on the fact that we had to balance equipment and road preservation, so one can go up, one can go down, local roads and streets, you know, can't do both. So the, the road maintenance dollars in here is eight hundred and fifty thousand dollars, you can see is an increase from the request in twenty twenty-three. And I included safety projects at a reduced amount from what it was in twenty twenty-three, just due to the lack of enough revenue trying to put as much to road preservation. This one also includes gravel road conversions, I put it in there after further discussions with, with John and Jennifer that came to meet about the budget. After I sent the memo, if we have to find somewhere to, to cut, to be able to fund road preservation, unfortunately, road conversions typically is what ends up being the first one on the chopping block. This amount, two hundred and fifteen thousand dollars would be to convert one gravel road, it's about a mile and three quarters long, it's the highest scoring road in our road conversion program. It's been in a road conversion program since the inception of road conversion program, it's finally reached it to the top and now, you know, the revenue issues are revenue issues. So we've never promised that we would do anything, we've got to have the money available to do it.
Right.
We use the twenty twenty bond funds to, to convert several miles of roadway, those have all been converted. They're being, the final ones are being, were converted and then the budget, what we budgeted for this year is being converted right now. So we could wait until we get bonds renewed in twenty twenty-five, so the additional revenue source that we talked about. Twenty, the first bond pays off in twenty twenty-five will be, be reissued in twenty twenty-five, maybe we can pick up road conversions with, with some of those dollars. So if we have to cut somewhere, move that two hundred and fifteen thousand dollars to a road preservation to offset the shortage in, in help general fund or whatever we needed to do, that would be the first place that I would look. Unfortunately, I feel those calls for the people that have to breathe the dust and are very unhappy about their gravel road. I'm very unhappy that they live there, but I didn't make them do it and I didn't cause them to get the poor health conditions and I understand it's an inconvenience, I lived on one. But if we're going to add more pavement that we have to preserve, it's just going to cost more to preserve it. So if there's going to be somewhere we need to trim, it would be that two hundred and fifteen thousand dollars for our conversions.
Debbie, a quick question for you that really isn't related, but if he ordered a truck for half a million bucks and it doesn't come in for two years, are we on a cash basis? So only when it goes through, like, only, only when it actually gets delivered and we pay?
Yes, you don't appreciate anything.
Thank you.
We signed an agreement to get the truck purchased, but we don't actually cut the check until we take the money.
Sorry.
It may be appropriated, it may be in the cash balance.
Okay.
We, if we, if we get it ordered and sign a contract issue, we can encumber it in the next year and it will.
Thank you.
Okay. Uh, so that's all I have in eleven fifty-seven is those four lines, total request is one billion five hundred and eighty-six thousand dollars.
And if you change anything, it would be of the gravel conversion.
The road conversion line is two hundred and fifteen thousand dollars. We were to lower the general fund, road preservation dollars, we could raise the road maintenance dollars, it's under, technically road maintenance, it's what it's called in here, seventy fifty-three line, could be moved to that line. I don't know if that changes anything, just make an advertisement.
How about your new equipment, you have into condition line, do you move it in here?
So new equipment's the same situation, if you take the two hundred and fifteen away. I've looked at a couple of options on new equipment also. It's in general, general, yeah. So on new equipment, I've asked Max to look into a couple more options for possibly funding new equipment that we need, but do it similar to what we've done with our large expenses with a loader or the chip seal equipment or the paver and spread it out over two or three years. I think the larger expenses, we spread out over four years and make annual payment, so we only had to budget for that annual payment. Budget for it in the next few years, wouldn't lower that equipment total that we would need also.
Okay.
So my understanding is looked into some of that, I don't know what those numbers would be, but we could look into doing that as well, lower that equipment request. It's in general fund, it's also in the food and beverage.
Debbie, if I add up all of, Debbie, if I, if I add up all of the highway numbers, no matter where they land, what's, what's the total amount of the total budget? Like, what's, what's his total, or maybe it's a question for you, I, I didn't know. Is it, if I add up?
Thirty million dollars.
No, it's not. It's around eleven million.
That's what it looks like.
So eleven million out of the fifty-ish, so twenty percent of our budget.
Only eleven, what's that?
So.
About to say salaries included is probably.
No, I just.
Around a month.
It can be a rough number.
That's why you were putting highway.
It's in a spreadsheet, I can probably find it on my computer, but it's got off right now, I've got it in the bag.
So it's twenty, I mean, twenty million bucks out of fifty?
And as of today, we've brought in seven months, because we just received food and beverage on Tuesday, eight hundred and fifty-two thousand dollars.
For the year.
For the, so far, yeah. We're averaging about a hundred and sixty thousand a month for food and beverage.
Start doing the math.
So it's significantly higher than what was projected, absolutely.
I mean, last, I mean, last year it went up, year before we were only getting about seventy thousand a month.
Did it ever get a hundred and sixty?
Yeah, it's averaged the last year and a half.
That's kind of what we talked about yesterday because like more restaurants are coming, things developing back up to COVID, that's why you see that increase.
But I think the, the projected versus the actual is much different even in this year. So we didn't budget more than what we were, we, we didn't project it to increase this year, but it's gone up even more than what we projected to this point.
Do they, do they get, does the state give you a, a run rate, a projection for the end of the year?
Not for food and beverage, they don't.
Okay, you just get it.
It just comes in as, yeah, I just get a report every month that they're saying twelve.
Do you know what our twelve-month rolling average is?
I'd figure.
Yeah, that would probably.
Four months as of, I think as of July.
Yeah. Because I figured if we use our twelve-month rolling average, that'll give us some indication of what potentially could happen next year. Because it's increasing, you at least get a percentage from.
What'd you guys decide on the total? Twelve million? What up?
Twelve million.
Eat it up, the way you're another pizza king.
Exactly. That's pretty good.
Okay.
Because. What time you get in?
That is equal.
Right.
What if you moved road preservation, which is the nine nineteen, nine hundred and something?
The nine hundred, so in general fund.
Nine fifteen that's in the commissioner line to food and beverage.
So you see that increase happening? Does we see that uptick?
Yes.
Okay.
To food and beverage and then move the new equipment, which is the three hundred and twenty-two CCD.
Three twenty from new equipment.
New equipment is in general fund.
So we just.
It's also food and beverage.
So we just free up a million too in general.
It's in both, so I would take it out of food and beverage, take it out of general, put it CCD, and then take the nine fifteen that is in.
Move it to.
County general and move it to food and beverage.
What does that do to CCD if we also add the sheriff's vehicles to it?
I don't know, I mean.
What, can the new?
Well, they'd be twelve, I guess, sorry, twelve typically, if they could.
I was trying to reduce the new equipment total request. I still have a number of what that is if we spread out a couple pieces of equipment over three or four years, reduce that number significantly.
You know, my other request is. Use ARP.
So.
Do we need a?
John.
Maintenance?
I can't hear.
Do we need a motion?
So I'm going to say, do you want to motion, what do you want to, wait, are you all good? Do you guys, do you guys?
I'm, I'm good with that.
That's what we were just talking about.
Yeah, can.
Can.
So at the end of twenty-two, we had seven hundred and fifty thousand in there.
Yeah, a million.
I'm sorry, a million in the twenty-two.
In CCD.
Yes.
We're estimating seven hundred and fifty in this year.
We're.
They were estimating receipts of two point six million next year, so.
Two point six or two point eight?
Two point six for revenue, plus we are at seven fifty there.
There are seven fifty sitting in there.
Yes, that's three point three available.
If the seven fifty, I mean, you.
So then we can take his new equipment and put it in.
Yes, yes, yes. And we're still, I don't know what we're anticipating getting in next year.
So do we need a motion or is that a motion?
I need, yeah, I need like five motions.
Five motions? Go put it all in one.
Because you're moving, we're moving out of the commission first.
Yeah, yes.
Nine hundred and fifteen thousand?
I want to, yeah, so I want the first motion to be nine fifteen, nine hundred and fifteen thousand front commissioner, county general, to food and beverage.
I make the motion that we move nine hundred and fifteen thousand out of county general to.
Commissioner.
From the commission, what's that saying?
Sorry.
To fund eleven fifty-seven. Is that my right number?
Second.
For the purpose of.
For the purpose of road preservation?
Yes.
Road preservation.
Okay, and that was the second you had?
Yes.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, go same side. All right.
Nine hundred and fifteen went out of, it would have.
I want to make sure of, is in addition to what is already in food and beverage. So there's already money in a road preservation line, seven fifty-three in food and beverage.
Right.
So say it's add to that, that line.
We're adding.
Make sure we're adding to the right line.
We're adding to the.
To the road maintenance line?
It's road maintenance.
Road maintenance.
Okay, that's why I was.
Oh, seventy fifty-three.
Yes.
Correct.
So nine fifteen is being added to the twenty twenty-four request of eight fifteen.
Yes.
Eight fifty, add another nine fifty, yeah, something like that. And then that was the only one so far?
So far.
Make sure I follow.
So then we need to add, so then that means that changes whatever this is of how we fund eleven fifty-seven for the motion, right? So add the eight fifty.
Right.
I gotta get my calculator out.
Is that seventeen sixty-five?
You're right. See, you're so good at sharing.
Not really, but I just want to keep moving.
So I move, so let me just make sure I do this right, I'll just make a motion for the eleven fifty-seven to increase. Do you ever do the line specific debit? Okay. I move that we increase line seven fifty-three out of fund eleven fifty-seven, food and beverage to seventeen sixty, one million seven hundred and sixty-five thousand for twenty twenty-four. Plus all of the other as submitted.
Plus all other highway.
Plus all the other highway, I'm sorry. That was a motion.
I'll second it.
Say aye.
Aye. I just got to make sure my numbers are right.
Do you get that there?
Seventy, so did you get, so what we did first, we just added it to it, so.
Yeah, so that line now has, or has been one seven six five.
Nine seven six five.
Yep, and that's the total amount, and then everything else adds.
That's, that's submitted.
Okay. I was going back to my general fund page, so mark it off because I assume you're not going to approve it in there too.
Oh, God.
I know.
We're.
Double dicker now?
The next motion, I want highway new equipment out of county general, oh oh six eight.
I move that, we, what's that now?
Three twenty.
Three twenty. Out of county general?
I move that, I move that we take the highway equipment out of county general, oh oh six eight for three hundred and twenty-one thousand and move it to eleven thirty-eight, which is CCD.
You have the second?
Second.
All those in favor say aye. Aye, go same side.
Isn't it in two places though?
What yours just did was from, that one's for moving out of general, three twenty, to the CCD, had nothing to do with all the other ones. So that's the amount that I budgeted in, one thousand oh six eight.
Okay.
Is, is that going to be a new line in CCD or is it?
Yes.
Different highway equipment line.
Should be an equipment line in there, I don't have CCD.
I'm going to say I don't see.
Three twenty.
It doesn't follow my facility equipment, does it?
No.
Do we have to?
So a new line. You created a new line for it.
Because we really haven't approved much of CCD at this point.
What else do I need to do today?
So let me, all right, well, never mind, that your equipment is not going to CCD, what, and then any other ones, for the, those are the language you want to move, okay?
Yeah, I've got one more fund, if you're, if you're done messing with that one.
Yes.
Well, because that went down to general all of a sudden, I was in eleven fifty-seven, and then we started connecting together, so I want to make sure I didn't skip a fund. So this one last year is going, this one this year. Got my eleven thirty-five. There is one fund left that I think is going to be open for discussion because we have to track down some other stuff that's smaller. Eleven ninety-one Riverboat.
So this is always a fun one.
If you were on the Riverboat, it may be fun, let's talk about the way we get the revenue.
It's like, every year I'm like, yeah, go ahead.
She laid it out very well, nobody knows what's happening with the Riverboat.
So it's like. It's the unknown.
For years, we got a hundred and twenty thousand dollars every August. We counted on that to buy new equipment, that's just what we had budgeted for a decade or more. Last year, it was going to go down, now it looks like it may be not even funded what we budgeted this year. So it's very unclear what we need to do with this fund, but we use it for equipment purchases. I budgeted the fifty thousand dollars. I don't know. I thought you were looking behind us, what's happening behind us?
Just the prosecutor coming in with drinks, didn't bring anyone else to anybody's table. So you did it for the fifty thousand.
I budgeted fifty thousand, they, my understanding is there's supposed to be fifty-eight thousand dollars coming, but we don't know. So I don't know what we want to do with this fund at all. Right now, we're kind of waiting on what to do with Riverboat later in the year after the August, when we usually get our distribution. We aren't spending any money out of it until we know what we're going to get for our distribution.
Sure.
We can do the same thing with this and just not plan to spend it until later in the year.
Do you want to, Debbie, over the fifty thousand or not, touch it right now?
Let me look and see when I found out last year.
Wait. It is more than what you thought it was though last year. Like, remember they were like, you might get fifteen thousand.
We ended up more, we did good last year, but this year.
It's this year where she told us.
We knew there was going to be a twenty percent drop in twenty twenty-two, because they changed the legislation on how it's distributed with Riverboat owners, so less comes out to the sharing units. We did not expect what happened to this year, to the, like, we're getting a twenty-three.
What are we getting in twenty-three?
Last year I didn't get the email, it's about eight fifteen.
Oh, yeah, because it dropped to like, we only received forty-one, one seventy-three.
So what I want to make sure, she mentioned it the other day, is the county in general gets this big distribution.
Right.
Then it gets distributed to the, and that's what flipped.
Right.
It's our uncertainty of how much we can actually use because the cities and towns get it. So it was like a number, I think it showed on the last, the other graph, it shows like four hundred thousand dollars comes from Boone County, well, that doesn't come.
Then it's come directly to us.
It gets split up.
And she's trying to figure out when she got the notification, I don't know if we approved this at the fifty thousand dollar and then you just not touch it. Because we can always adjust it before we submit to the state.
And they showed it upside down, submitted.
Debbie, when did you receive, when did you get?
Eight fifteen, we could just wait on this one.
Yeah.
Till August or September, and we can always advertise it.
I'm going to say we can advertise it now.
And then.
Change it.
We're not just saying.
Can I, yeah.
I was afraid that if we submit it and it shows we're not going to get revenue, they're going to flag it anyway.
Oh, no, no, no.
Not that level of detail.
So we do the eleven ninety-one, like I said, we advertise it, but we can change it afterwards. I move that we approve eleven ninety-one Riverboat at the fifty thousand dollars requested for the total report.
Second.
All those in favor say aye. Aye.
Just randomly, you think it'll be more than it did?
I don't know. It was one, I mean, we saw it happen where all of a sudden it shifted to science and all, it's down to eleven, and it doesn't make any sense. And Phil, he answered us from auditor, state auditor office on why. But I don't know how we'd know otherwise, what do you think we're going to get? I mean, it kind of depends on the auditors, usually like, we go back, well, then maybe they fuck her, do we think something's different, I don't know.
What if?
So we get August.
Do you have anything else next?
What did we end up getting last year? What did we end up getting last year?
Last year we got, well, actually, twenty-one, we got a hundred and twenty-two thousand, nine eighteen, and it technically started last year. The fifteen thousand dip for twenty twenty. But you had, I think, some cash reserves. In general, it's going to talk about it after it dropped. Two, three other things in general.
Just, okay, who's got, in, in general, he's got just mainly wages.
I got mainly wages, I want to make sure, I didn't, we didn't actually talk about the entire fund, we talked about the two major additional requests.
Right.
I had also submitted, which, you know, we're not supposed to talk about wages, we don't want to talk about compensation on a couple of different things. On-call pay, right now we have individuals, we have had, as far back as I know, individual that serves on-call for a week, and then goes off, and another individual serves on-call, we have a rotation of folks that do that for zero dollars in compensation for being on-call. The only time they would make any money is if they got called out, they would get paid their hourly rate. So had included a total of ten thousand four hundred dollars, that's where our wages currently come from, so I included it in a general fund. If we want to look at it, it could come from somewhere else, I'm open to those ideas as well, but we've got to find a way to pay our folks for being on-call, stopping whatever they're doing, not leaving the county, not leaving the general area, be able to respond. Wanted to do it as a two hundred dollar additional pay for them for that week of being on-call. They would then get paid with their hourly rate, if they got called out, if they didn't get called out at all, they would just get the two hundred dollar amount. It would only be for the individual that was serving in the on-call role, not for others that got called out because there was a major event, just for those emergency call-outs only. So there's a rotation of several guys, current center on that. So the two hundred dollar amount came from talking to three different departments of the county departments with the, the community corrections in prosecutor's office, and also talked to the coroner, and then reached out to the private sector after talking to John Reiner Vice, reached out to private sector, and R E M C is about a similar type of situation, they only get called out if they have an emergency or if there's some power line that goes down, and they're about two hundred and fifty dollars to be on-call.
How, how often are you calling people out?
Um, I.
On a monthly basis?
So dispatch actually takes the calls and calls our individuals out. There may be, maybe weeks that nobody gets called, if there's no storms or stop signs get down, or no emergency issues arise. So there may be a week that somebody doesn't, doesn't get called out, and there may be weeks they get called out two or three times depending on the weather. So weather and environmental factors. So that's the, the request for ten thousand four hundred dollars, and it was included in general fund.
Any other requests or anything that?
Um, the other request in general fund, seasonal part-time position, currently have, budgeted to have two seasonal part-time positions, and they work for about twelve weeks during the summer months. We found that to be a very good use of part-time help, to be able to come out and work, do groundwork, general maintenance, traffic control during those summer months, just requesting an additional one of those folks, total amount of that request is ninety-six hundred dollars. Didn't have it in a separate line currently, that's in a, it's a seasonal part-time line, but in the budget, I, in this form I submitted, I said, I included it separately, so you could see it was an additional request, but it could be included with that line.
If it's done.
If it was approved.
Right.
What's that sixteen out of eight, is that what you're looking at, highway season?
Well, yes, yes, but, but it's, it's a ninety-six, yeah, it's on the very last page, it's ninety-six hundred is what he's, that would be additional to.
Yeah, so the nineteen-two is for additional, for the current, if two employees, this would be an additional person at that rate, same rate. So that's why I include it separately so you can see what else requested.
Right. So that, that'll all be under, when we come back to salaries.
Yep, and then the other request is an additional project manager, just put it in there at the maximum amount for the salary study allows. We have, I touched on it at the beginning, but the amounts of projects going after federal aid and community crossings has been very beneficial. We've got awarded six million dollars in the month of April this year. So it's, it's a good system to go after, but the more projects we get, the more projects there are to manage. Adding the lead projects, the development projects, and all of the work that goes along with those throughout submittal to review, to construction is more than our office can, can handle. It is a significant burden, it can't continue like it is, if this can't come from general fund, you want to find somewhere else to pay for it. I'm open to any ideas, because we've got to do something different than what we're currently doing. It is not a sustainable situation, the, you know, right now we're talking about one, one piece of the lead project and the three roads that are the fringe. We're talking about projects that are ten times the size of that, so they're not all going to use state roads to get there, they're not going to only impact people that have sold their property. They're going to impact county residents, county roads, and people that are, that we are responsible to make sure they have safe access to their property. So in order to do that, we have to be in front of those developers, we have to be out in front of all of the, the issues and concerns of being reached out to those folks and be available, be able to respond in the event that they do have questions and issues they want to address. So that request is really the, the maximum amount that is allowed by the salary order, it's going to take a high-level person to be able to take this on. It's not something we can just bring on and train, we're going to need to get someone that has experience in this field doing this type of work. If that needs to come from M D H, it needs to come from M D H, it's got to come from somewhere. So those are my three requests, however, if you want me to resubmit, see, re-advertise, I'll put it wherever you want to put it, but that's, that's my request.
Thank you.
Yes, you should. Most likely, Mrs. Trump will answer that.
Squeaky chair today.
Thanks.
Thank you.
It's all I have.
Appreciate it.
No, I just wanted to recap, to make sure we have everything correct, that every fund was approved as is, with the exception of the two lines in general getting moved to food and beverage, is that correct?
No.
No.
And wages.
One to food and beverage and one to CCD.
Oh, I'm sorry, yeah. And one of, yeah.
You got it mostly right.
So then no vote was taken on the general at all?
Right.
Only wages and then the other two, I think it took. Because they have only wages, and then the other two lines took off.
I just wanna make sure.
Yep.
She was taking it up.
We'll need to revisit, we voted on it, we need to revisit.
Okay. Thank you.
We have a two-minute break, I know we're running behind, but.
Sure.
So we leave our asked questions, but we will sit here silent.
Yeah. All the other grandparents. I write a passage. It was like, gotta go, gotta go. So you know, once you accept it, then you're, you know, okay with it. We did have to go through the resistance phase, but we came out of it alright.
Alicia, I'm not, my commitment, I traded emails. I get the H R. And I've never, I sent her another note today, but I, I think I have thirty days, so I have some things in order. So if I don't have them, is there another person? She said she was going from main point to main with me. And I'm now gonna be out of town a couple of days next week, so I just, so if there's, I'm just curious. I mean, I'll text you, I guess, if I don't, please do, but is there another, or is there another person? Okay, so I'm on Wednesday, Thursday, and I just, I was sworn in on twenty-nine, I have thirty days, yeah. I don't even know what, what I, anyway, I just need to have that meeting, so I'll let you know.
Yes, yes.
I'm sorry? I'll wait until she has a minute.
What are you drinking there, is that like a watered-down ice cream?
Yeah.
Is it any good?
Yeah, I still like tea, as long as it's got, I, I can't just drink water, a little flavors, or just a little bit, I just, for some reason, I don't know why. I shouldn't, I shouldn't, I shouldn't be, I shouldn't be that way, but I, I just like, I like it.
Debbie didn't like me rocking the chair.
You're not kidding?
How does she hear that?
Oh, it's loud, you think?
Not my hips, I gotta do it. All the guys want now.
Okay, well, thanks for coming, we're running a little bit behind, so let's go. Uh, we're not doing anything with salaries, obviously, so let's just start by going through your major changes. The first one is insurance, which I have a question, a huge question. I don't, is this one that was duplicated?
Yes.
Okay, never mind. Look, I just found a six million dollars.
I still do have questions.
That's fine.
Can you give us a breakdown on, I guess with insurance, should we, should we start seeing a reduction in insurance costs?
I might be able to answer that better, or Kenny and I might be able to answer that better. So are, based off of, and it's slightly lower than what you guys are requesting, based, our preliminary budget number is actually five, two, one, three, five, ten. And that could possibly decrease more once our second quarter numbers come in, which we should get in August, I believe. And I, my understanding is, is that we will possibly see a decrease.
What's the amount requested?
Oh, I forget that you're in those meetings.
It may take another, it may take another cycle.
Okay, okay.
And how long is a cycle?
What's quarter, or?
Six months.
I'm not indirect.
Yeah.
Oh, I'm not, I was just painting.
Yeah. Yep.
We were still getting claims a good six to eight months later.
Yeah.
So what's the total budget request? Because I, I'm seeing a change.
I think it's supposed to be five, two, one, three, five, ten.
Well, the five-seven was what was suggested by, by U X for us to request.
Five-seven?
Yeah. But as these numbers come in, that could be, that could be reduced. And, and the expectation is it's gonna be closer to five-two.
Okay.
Yes.
But on my sheet, Debbie, it shows eleven oh five-seven, I know that's wrong, but left of it is five-three and right of it is the six-one change.
Five-seven.
Where?
That's what she just said.
Oh, sorry. Thank you.
So you're just talking about from there.
Got it.
Very weird.
Okay.
Okay. Are we skipping OSHA retirement and unemployment contributions right now? Or do we talk about unemployment at least?
Yeah, let's talk about.
There's an increase.
Increase in unemployment.
Those red numbers are the correct numbers they requested in the next three lines.
So unemployment going up twenty thousand? Those are based on the number of employees and the dollar you pay out in salaries.
Going up, or that's the amount they're requesting?
The amount they are requesting is the red number.
Okay, so they're not, so those aren't increasing?
So it's flat.
Okay, okay, sorry. Alright, next one, indirect.
O A S I, retirement.
Doesn't it go up a little bit? Or not?
Well, they won't, the retirement won't go up.
It should be up a little bit if there are more employees, though.
It is.
But we haven't made any decisions about.
Nine seventy-six versus six.
Okay, but I mean, it will potentially go up.
Right, we'll just have to come back to that.
Yes, yeah, yeah, okay.
We want those together with.
I thought, because I thought when we turned in was an estimate of it.
Okay, then, I think the next one, we took out road preservation, eh, the indirect contract consult.
We were paying for the P R firm from the education fund that we had through COVID, and now that's been spent, so we're moving to our indirect consultant.
That's one of those ones, right, when we get a grant, we always know that we might not be able to continue it.
Seventy-five thousand, yeah?
And we are, we're having to make some cuts, and that will be how much you talk about.
It's been pretty effective to get word out to the constituents on what we're doing. I think that's one of the goals we have, and that's what we're talking about with broadcasting meetings.
I think even with broadcasting meetings, that probably would reduce the need for this, because they may be collectively watching online or on YouTube. They'll be able to access it easily. What is the, what's the state, what's the state legislature?
Eleven, seven.
This is stated for by COVID.
So we require for ninety days to store those meetings, though.
I think we should throw a bomb in that now, but, yeah.
And there's no cost to that.
And there's no cost, right.
So just something that we've gotta figure out, because we are at a point where, I think perhaps you've heard our summary this morning. Where are we at, Uka Krom or Susan Staris, county general, and what the goal is and how much can we cut?
Yeah, what you just moved, now are. Sorry, I forgot to tap. Yeah, I mean, you moved about one point two million, so you're in the two-million area now, and you need to cut that to three. And that's to get balance.
That's to get, that's to get balance. And that doesn't include a potential three hundred and fifty thousand, three percent raise, and a five hundred and ninety thousand, five percent.
Right. So we really need to be talking about.
Two and a half.
So the indirect contract, just go back to that, is it seventy-five this budget or one eighty?
One eighty.
Thank you. As opposed to the first page.
And that's just for the publications that are going out?
The seventy-five thousand is for that.
Okay.
The hundred and five thousand is what we've had in there.
Okay.
That's what we use for all types of different consulting.
Can I go back to insurance for just a hot minute?
Yes.
Right now, we have a budget balance of two point four million. So I feel like the five point two is a little high.
That's what, okay.
Did you make that? Our, that one's in the insurance line right now is two point four million. Which is about forty-five percent for the year, and we're over half, so I don't anticipate a lot more claims, only because of specific reasons as to why that is, but yeah.
Tell me that, I'm sorry, two point?
Two point four is what's in there right now.
I, oh, sorry.
And that's as current as of last week.
We typically budget based off the preliminary number that they give us. We'll get another number in August. This is one that I think we should at least do the five point two, to be.
I'll just tell you what's in there.
Yeah, okay.
I think we advertise it, but I think it's one that we come back to right before you submit to state and get a more accurate number. Because even if we double it, we know.
Yeah, we will vote on it, I just want you to know what was in there.
No, that's, that's, I mean, you could, you could say almost a half a million dollars, based on the number that you have now, even if you double it right now, from what we have based on what we submitted.
And general, actually, seventy-five four, I'm sorry, I missed the second.
That was moving to the R from the education fund that I was in before.
Uh, where do, where does the H S A payment come out of? Because that's not something we've talked about at all.
The insurance line.
The insurance line, okay.
So that's included, I mean, that's also been paid out of that, with the balance remaining, two point five.
I'm try, I can't remember if the five point two includes the H S A or not.
No.
No?
I don't believe so, because that's, that's directly from you, that's not, insurance company doesn't pay that.
Right.
Okay, so we just need to remember that. Where are we at? Aspire.
Aspire.
Did they increase their?
It's whatever the number they send us, and that's what we expect it to be.
Say they have something up yet?
They haven't.
That's just putting in a percentage of increase, and it was three percent.
Who is your point in that?
Audi. Aubrey Racing, she works Bob's office.
They usually doesn't come out yet, they usually just come out to all.
Do we do a three-year contract with Aspire, where they kind of pay, we set a rate, we know what it's gonna be for.
We don't, we don't set a rate.
I know.
That's set by the state.
We have no choice.
It's based on population, so they, they just tell us what it's gonna be, and that's what we have to pay, we don't have any choice. We have, we beat that horse to death trying to find a different way to do it.
Alright, telephone.
I believe we ran short a little bit this year, so she is increasing the brand this year.
Hey, just for clarification, this is cell phones, I'm assuming?
It's all cell phones, I believe. It's all one thing. So it's landlines.
Everything.
So the monthly bill, basically, phone system, for example.
So the two thousand and twenty-three amended budget was one forty-one, seven thirty-one, so do you need the full one sixty? Or could we do like one forty-five?
Well, we're anticipating the one sixty could, based on if there's more employees than eight phones.
So we go fifteen thousand dollars with that many employees going on?
We ran short last year, so just trying to build in to make sure we don't run short again next year.
Have we explored a policy of bringing on device and reimbursement? And that's typically what a lot of folks in the private sector are doing, one, it reduces our costs significantly, it saves us money, because ninety-nine.
It's different for government, because.
Open the foyer.
Because your personal phone be discoverable.
Oh, yeah, yeah, which is why we have to have like those computers.
Yeah.
It's alright, Aaron.
No, I, I, I get it, I'm just worried about how many folks are getting cell phones, and how many, you get everybody, you, you get, it act, I'm just telling you, it just starts adding up and giving out cell phones for elected officials and certain folks, I understand it, but it's, yeah. That cost is always gonna keep going up.
You're right.
Huh?
I say you're right.
I just, for certain elected officials, I get that, it's, it's, excuse me? Ah, ah, I've seen shaking his head.
So really, all elected officials should have.
That, so, in essence, in essence, in essence, as soon as someone, no, I'm serious, as soon as someone calls me, as soon as someone calls me as, as a county elected official, and I have my email, my email and everything I do on my phone is discoverable.
Everything I do is on my personal phone. I even receive county emails on that. So this, you go to court at any point in time, I will not let an employee go through that same. I had chosen that, because I'm elected to it. When you hire somebody, you have to, you have to give them that cell phone. If they're on-call twenty-four-seven, you cannot expect them to use a personal phone to make your business off.
Well, that's what, that's what I'm saying, is if, if every employee that we give a cell phone to is on-call twenty-four-seven, that, that's different. But I'm saying if we're giving out cell phone.
But if we've got somebody that's on-call for a week, we gotta have phone.
They do, so as soon as they come off-call for a week, whoever's on-call, just as they do the hospital, they give them that phone. It's just, it's a, it's a cost that, our goal is to mitigate costs by all means necessary. So if there's a way to cut costs, you cut costs ten times by a hundred thousand dollars across agencies, you said it was a million dollars. While it may be incremental here or incremental there, it adds up. But if we just, here you can get this, you get that, I can say, hey, I need to, there's a reason now I need a cell phone, because I don't, as an elected official, I can say, I don't want anybody to call me, I don't want anybody to email me, then I become, you know, I'm not used to my constituents, but still, looking at cost overall. But if we just, here you can get this, you get that, I can say, hey, I need to, there's a reason now I need a cell phone, because I don't, as an elected official, I can say, I don't want anybody to call me, I don't want anybody to email me, then I become, you know, I'm not used to my constituents, but still looking at cost overall.
Same way with your computer.
That's why I use a county computer.
You have a personal computer too, but if you receive county emails on your personal computer, it can be pulled in.
Which I know. Which I know. That's why I use this. Yeah.
Just saying, that's why we provide ourselves.
Yep.
Insurance building and other?
Our insurance will have a little bit on the buildings and it also, our cyber policy will now.
Payroll services used to get dead, General.
Oh, was it changed on that?
Okay, why is it still in Commissioner's budget?
Where should it be?
It's at the very bottom.
Where should it be?
Sixty-eight forty-three.
Where should it be?
Nowhere, it should be zero.
What is it for?
We.
Help, help me.
I was gonna say, yeah, you, like, okay.
That's what, just moved into your budget, right? I'm sorry, a hundred fifteen thousand dollars for payroll services. Yes, time's long, time's up, that's in the IT budget now.
So that can be zero?
So we take that out of here?
Oh, okay.
Yes, it can be zero here. It was just put both because we didn't know where the council wanted it.
Thank you.
Donnie, I'm, obviously I've said this eight times in the last three hours, I'm new, shocker. So back to your example of the person who's on call, who's that, who is that employee that's on call for a week and then, and then Aaron's example?
Just, just talk about the county employees that are on call weekly.
So, like, give me an example.
You've got management, or not management, facilities, facilities, they're on call twenty-four seven.
Facility, okay. Okay.
So that's why.
So Max has a phone.
Max is on it, but they, they go on it, and I can't say exactly what their schedule is.
That's fine.
They go on a schedule of who's on call first.
So, he's, he's got a.
Prohibition has on call people.
Okay.
Just to be fair here, the vast majority of that budget, that hundred sixty, whatever it was, that's not the cell phones. The vast majority of that is the, is the phone system.
Well, that's helpful enough.
I, I get that, but I, I, I go back to, I use cell phones, I use take-home cars, I use all of that. At the end of the day, the constituents of Boone County are paying for this. So if we can reduce costs, we should be doing this by all means necessary. And I get that elected officials' phones are requested, I'm sorry, you're saying they're requested from employee requests, I hundred percent get that, but if there's a way to reduce the cost, great.
I think we're pretty, your, your example you gave earlier of just certain management, certain people, I think we're already there.
Okay.
I mean, the vast majority of the phone, of cell phones are at Sheriff's Office, right, Prosecutor's Office, right, you just have to want them here.
Oh, boy, that's good, I don't, I don't get the point.
I'm gonna get the electoral fraud.
Prohibition has one that they share.
Okay.
Um, you know, it's not like every employee has a cell, that's not the case.
Okay.
It's just a few here and there and then, like, all the road deputies have, have cell phones.
Got it. Okay.
Uh, the other part of it is like the, um, the, the MiFi's that are in the cars, for example.
Yeah, that, that's good, I, we're good.
It, it's good, when I see a fifteen thousand dollar increase and he says, oh, we, we have more employees coming, I'm like, well, how many more employees are coming to get a cell phone?
Yeah.
So, thank you.
I have a question, conference and registration fees, is any of this in that, um?
They're not considered, dang it, in the twelve seventeen, no.
Okay.
It'll fall.
Only ninety-seven point six percent has been used this year, do you guys need all eleven thousand?
On the insurance building, do we just, do we go out for bid every three or four years to keep these people honest?
We, we do our, our insurance for both health insurance and property casualty on three-year rule, and that we believe that gets us our best rates.
And this morning we were going over, um, Sheriff Harris's budget and talking about the cameras in the jail and we had the question of if that would decrease our insurance cost at all with the cameras.
If we didn't, if we didn't have them, our insurance would be dramatically higher.
Uh, uh, what, what she's actually talking about is we put in the line to add the eighty-five cameras in the cells themselves, and the question was whether or not having those would decrease our liability cost.
Sounds like it will, based on.
That the sheriffs are.
They will long-term, you won't see an immediate reduction in premium, it's a bit of a lower the number of cases we have and that's what we look at, we'll look at, you know, the past four quarters and claims that we have with inmates.
Okay.
So you won't, you won't get a write-off immediately, um, for the cost, but the reduction will, will be over a period of time, no question.
How many, how many take-home vehicles does the Commissioners' Office have? Or, how many take-home vehicles does your office manage?
That we manage, all take-home vehicles?
So, in the Commissioners' Office, everyone that reports to you, works, works within your purview, management, how many take-home vehicles do you own?
Secret, I know, he's talking about departments.
Right.
Oh, you're talking about that? I'd have to look here, I don't know the number I'm talking about, I thought you were just talking about our office, you talked about the general.
Anyone who reports to you, that, what I'm saying is, I, I, I've asked a question to everyone, once again, looking at how do we reduce cost and overhead? What's the, what's the need for the builders who have, if they're on call, we get it, but from the folks that we've talked to here today, the ones who have said, oh, we take the, we use a take-home vehicle, a majority of them said, I drive my vehicle to my home, but I, I get out of it and if I go to the grocery store, I do anything personal, I drive that vehicle, I drive my personal vehicle. So we're trying to look at maintenance costs, fuel costs, did there have been a multitude of requests to say, we need more money for maintenance of vehicles, we need more money for fuel, if we can reduce those costs and figure out, like, who has a take-home vehicle and the true need of it, I think that is most imperative, but figuring that out is key.
My best guess of that is, is it's the only ones that are on call. And so, does anybody who would have a reason to go from their home directly to a job site?
But do we monitor to make sure that that's what it's used for? So let me give you, let me give you a real-life example, hey, I'm, I, I may be on call, or I may not be on call, but I'm in accounting vehicle, I gotta run to my kid's baseball game, I'm going to the PTO meeting, I'm going to the grocery store, I'm out on the weekend and I wanna go to the fishing bank, I wanna go hang out. I look at that and I do that, you know, twenty-six weekends out of a year, I add twenty thousand miles to the car, whatever it may be, there's still a cost associated with it, do we monitor that? And I think the sheriff, I, I love your example, your analogy of how you track car braking and all that, and you keep that, do we do that at the county level with your office and people who have take-home vehicles?
I believe we have GPS on all of the vehicles.
County highway, I, I'm almost sure here it has GPS. Ours have all GPS on every vehicle, our level doesn't take-home vehicle, it goes to and from.
Say it again. Say it, I'm sorry, say it again. You know, I'm just saying.
Nick Paul, Boone County Highway.
Nice speech, sir.
Uh, on the, on the highway department that has a take-home vehicle goes to and from that has GPS on it.
Okay.
Um, we can track it via mobile apps, also on our GIS program that the CCD have, or the whatever, thanks for the talk about. The CCD uses.
He's in the CDC, maybe they don't let it.
Yeah, the, uh, the other department vehicles, there is, when the on-call people I was talking about, there's an on-call phone, that was a question a minute ago, that phone rotates with those folks that are on call, or they use their personal phone, that's the on-call group. High-level management folks do, they're coordinating the effort with all the staff and all reaching out to the public. And then anybody that's on call also takes a vehicle to and from only, because they are on call only while they're on call.
Makes sense.
So, the underlying that has it to and from all the time, the highway department.
It's not based on.
Thank you.
How many does it sound?
Should be everything, except for salaries.
I think the only thing left is the salaries.
Yeah, I thought I had one other question, but.
Cause the new equipment got taken out.
Yeah.
David, anything else on your side?
So, it's come dry in.
So what?
Insurance shouldn't come down, they think.
Yeah.
On the indirect contract?
Okay.
So, we are having to make some difficult decisions because we have to make some cuts in the grant that we received for educating and recruiting the county citizens during COVID was put to a lethal use, but that grant has gone away. And, to me, that seventy-five thousand dollars needs to be thoroughly discussed, I'd be in favor for that being one of the major cuts that we do need to make to reach our goal for County General. We are doing some other things that are helpful, like live streaming and we'll be posting Armenians online, I think that's very helpful. We do have now Maria from the local newspaper who is here consistently, there were, you know, a number of months, either maybe a year and a half, and we didn't have anybody from the local paper, so that's been helpful. So, that's one of those ones that, in my mind, we're gonna, we're gonna have to start making some significant cuts, it could come from five hundred here, a thousand here, this is a big chunk, I think it needs to be looked at for cutting to reach our goal. Unless there's something else in this one here that you rank above this as far as, well, we can let this one go instead. So, we do need to make some cuts though.
Nope, I, I would agree, I think there, just, I think for sake of time today, going over the major ones, there are probably some other things to, to even look at here, but some of them are related to salary requests, uh, but to that point, that's a, I think, I think you said, is David burning, yes, that we're missing to your knowledge?
Not on the increases that you want, no.
John, Kenny?
Do you know, well, there was a question about if NEOGAP should be moved to County General? And there was a twenty thousand dollar increase in that, do you know if the twenty thousand from training was going to be used for that increase?
That was the intent, I believe.
Okay.
I, I think she was gonna attempt to encumber that.
Okay. Where would the rest of, where? I guess we don't have to make that decision today, but we've, we've still got to figure out where, if NEOGAP stays in CCD or if, or if it goes to County General.
If we, if we, we can move that out of CCD though, right? This, this, the, the biggest thing that I know is if we go out of CCD now, then I'm permanently coming out of CCD because you are gonna have to renew that contract, I think Jeff said yesterday, that's a three-year contract.
I think it's next year.
Next year?
Yeah.
But it doesn't have to permanently come out, right?
No, no, that's what I'm just saying, just, just that we know that, like, hey, this year, we're gonna take it out of CCD, but next year, what does it come out of? It's more or less one of those five-year strategic plan things, like, moving forward, it's not going anywhere, so what happens to it? So, are you good with, if we put that in CCD?
I don't know why we put it in CCD.
Uh, that's what, it's, it's not a capital expense, which is why I'm kind of.
It's an HR expense, it really belongs to.
Yeah. Yeah, it should stay at that level.
I don't think it falls under CCD.
And I don't want.
That's just me.
But, no, I agree, because I think if we make that exception, we can go to, every other department can come and make the justification, we'll put this in CCD.
Right.
Which one did I talk about?
That was our concern, we brought it up, because we, every other maintenance contract is in, you have to.
Okay.
This is the one we were trying to figure out why we moved it to CCD last year though.
Well, here we go, it was in, I think it was in CCD the first year because it was a new purchase. And then the second year, we had talked about maybe move it back, we put it in both, and then decided to keep it in CCD and take it out of County General because of this same issue.
Yeah.
Okay.
And then we're essentially doing the same thing this year. Our concern is if that ever got flagged during an audit.
That's what you're saying.
It's gonna create a problem.
Cause it would be the one, it's the one thing that doesn't match when it.
It's not like a full expenditure.
Yeah.
CCD does, the description that we got yesterday says to purchase, lease, upgrade, maintain, or repair computer hardware and software, so by that, it's maintaining software.
The training part wouldn't be, right, the maintenance part.
Maintenance part would, but not the training part.
But it's not training.
Yeah, the training part would not be considered maintenance.
And they don't.
Software license would.
That's what it, that's the license cost, they were gonna use twenty thousand from training to cover that twenty thousand dollar difference, but the, the, is it the eighty-five thousand, that's the software cost?
Correct.
Okay.
I would, I would be in favor of leaving it in County General, just.
Well, if we're leaving it, it'd be a CCD.
I'm sorry, I would be in favor of moving it to County General to be consistent across the board with everything else, but I don't know how.
I'm good with moving it to, just to make sure that it doesn't get flagged, if it's something that's gonna be an issue, then there's no reason to create a, a potential issue.
And that comes back to you, doesn't it?
See, that absolutely does, yes it does, and I would not be happy about that.
Is it not maintaining? Is it not maintaining software?
Could we split it, like we did that one?
I'm just worried about putting more in County General when we're trying to get an additional two million out of it.
I, I.
I just don't have a way to explain why it's in there.
Right.
I mean, that's, you're gonna look at it like I have three kids. There is a portion of it though that would be applicable for being in CCD, is that what you were saying?
Well, like licensing, software licensing would be considered part of, over whole CCDs.
Split it up, or is that problematic?
Isn't that what it is, Sean?
It is, it's, it, well, again, it all depends on how they view it, it's not the purchase of a new piece of software, it's the.
Maintenance?
It's a cloud-based application, so it's the, the service contract basically of maintaining access to it.
So was that maintained software?
I, I don't know, that's what I'm getting at.
Cause this says maintained software.
I'll find out, they're in my office, I'll find out.
There you go, check with them.
Just go back and.
Let's just, just, just remember, whatever we, we do, if we do move this or keep this in CCD, anyone else, or any other software purchases that fall under that, there could be a massive shift every quick, Sean's like, yep.
Well, I'm just, well, I guess if they're okay with it, they'd be the state where it counts, if they're okay with it, then that might help actually, quite frankly, depending on, you know, what's available in CCD on any.
And we still have to approve anything that we want to take out CCD and make sure.
Right.
Can float it.
Right, so I, in my mind, I'm just kind of, yeah, okay.
Can I go back, um, I know, Jeff, you've got eight minutes left. The legal services, four hundred thousand dollars, I mean, again, just quick tutorial for me, is that for different legal things we have to deal with at the Commissioners' level, whether or not it's?
Yeah, it, it involves all of our legal expenses.
Is that a four hundred thousand dollar consistent nut every year, I mean, is that?
No, no, a part of it is, but part of it's not, it depends on how much litigation there is, it depends on, uh, all that kind of stuff.
Okay.
We use outside law firms for different things, um, so it depends on if those needs arise.
Okay.
You got a contractual part and then you got a, another part that's.
I was just curious, and again, just thinking about the idea of carving out, where could we cut, and I'm not suggesting that you have a crystal ball, but, one, you're confirming for me what it is, and two, it's probably all over the board, but could, could we lean into our attorneys and say, hey, guys, based on the horizon? I mean, they may say, well, leap is, I mean, I don't know what they're gonna say, but have we done that to say, does this make sense, or can we cut it fifty, or?
You're not gonna get, attorney to cut their fees right now.
Not gonna. I didn't think so, I mean, we've got one right here, but I just, just, I'm just curious, I, I know it is, but.
Yeah, we have, we have tour claims almost every three weeks, um, so those all have to be dealt with.
Sure.
And, which is, it's part of it.
It was four hundred thousand, I thought I'd give it a try.
Were, were we just, just, if I, given time, probably got twelve to fifteen open litigation files.
Thank you.
For the county's fee.
Okay, similarly, what about mental health, and again, just give me the, is that Aspire that?
Uh, which one are we talking about?
Aspire is four seventy-five, but below that, what's?
Boone County Mental Health.
Is that, right below it is seventy-five, Boone County Mental Health.
Boone County Mental Health is, uh, an organization that we have a contractual relationship with, and they do certain things that we would probably have to pick up as a county if they didn't do that.
Got it.
We have a money.
Yes, they have.
For that.
Thank you.
Good money from the state specifically for those two purposes.
Thank you.
How, how much is the Commissioners' money paid by?
I, I don't know.
Five. Five hundred thousand.
A half a million?
You have a rate date of like, like, four million?
No.
You're like, what, what do you mean, only five hundred thousand?
There's always over two.
Exactly.
There's only one rate day fund, in that fund.
And the Boone County Arc and Senior Services, are those contractually like obligated, are those numbers that we give based on, they're obligated?
Well, it depends on how you define obligated, so, they, again, they do services for the citizens of Boone County that if they chose not to do, we would have to put money into those services. So Arc of Boone County transports a lot of disabled people.
Right.
And if they don't have that, this, that ability to do that, then we have to step up and create a transportation program for them. Uh, and Senior Services does the same thing, they transport seniors, they do senior programming, and if they're not doing that. And Senior Services does the same thing, they transport seniors, they do senior programming, and if they're not doing that, then somebody, uh, under state statute has to pick that up. Just like EMS, I'm a member from EMS as well, if EMS, if Witherm stops doing EMS, it's all us to fix that.
No, I appreciate that, I, I'm just, I'm just looking at the, the high-ticket items, and then for each and youth, I mean, we had a great presentation yesterday from the county extension. We give them a hundred and thirty-five thousand dollars a year, is that paid, cause I think forty is pretty good for the county, especially with our act community. Is that one thirty-five, just paid, we try to sustain that, cause it's, it's like that number is pretty-
Is that the salary line though?
That's for, that's for forty.
That's actually-
Forty's, well, generally for forty, so salary, we pay half of the salary for these.
Extension?
Right.
Okay.
We pay full-time for all the office staff and-
That line has gone up quite a bit, hasn't it, the one thirty-five?
It was, it, that one fifteen.
Yeah, and it's gone up, cause that, the one thirty-five is for each, then we also give them twenty-five out of each budget.
That's right.
Yeah.
So is the one thirty-five just for salaries?
No.
No, we pay them.
We, we pay them?
We pay them.
That's what I thought when you came in. Yeah, yeah.
We, we, we pay one hundred percent of, of the, the secretaries or the staff and half of the extension.
So the one thirty-five is just us supporting forty, right? Is that safe to say? For like the fair interest?
That's been that, that way for a long time, uh, I think-
It's always been a number.
I think it was Marsha that actually raised that two years ago, if I'm not mistaken.
I think you're right. I think you're right.
And this is a smaller amount, but who, if you explain the benefit that we are for or not getting from CERDA, and what our current participation is with that body?
Uh, CERDA isn't paid in play, so if we're gonna apply for, uh, any kind of grant funding from them through the transportation system, we have to, we have to pay them.
Do we foresee I R P grant with the transportation?
This is personally what, uh, allows senior services to do what they do, being a member of this.
Okay, so that, there is a connection between you and Senior Services? And they do audit that yearly?
Yeah, and if you have not paid your, your fee, then you're, you're opted out of the program.
And then just procedurally, you're to go back to the ARC, for example, we, do we true it up every year to say, hey, here's what we budgeted? What did it cost to take all those trips, to get those people, and then, and then that informs you as to what the budget number is?
It's based on a percentage of their, uh, total budget.
Okay.
And it used to be, uh, I've been doing this quite a long time, when I started it was, I think it was ten percent of the budget.
Okay.
Now I think it's more like four percent of their budget.
Okay.
Because their budget has increased and our, our amount we've given them has not increased over the years.
One thing about ARC two is that if we did not provide that funding, they could apply for their own levy, and, uh, that would decrease toward County General levy. And it's substantially more than what is a hundred and thirty thousand or whatever, if they, if they did their own levy, and that's part of the agreement, as we count in ARC, if they did their own levy, last calculation, it would be three or four hundred thousand dollars.
Great, thanks.
They've been really, really good partners, and trying to keep that number down.
Good.
Can we have sixty thousand from A R P? I mean, not me, but Sean needs it.
We need to verify what's in there, wait.
Okay.
I don't see that being an issue really, so if they wanna look at a software, is, what's, what is it?
Fiber.
Fiber, I go for the fibers, okay.
While you're at it, don't keep asking.
How much are your, how much are your cars, what do you grid, budget grid? Five forty. That's my six, that's our six hundred thousand, what's left? You can buy ten cars for the shares department.
I don't know that whole thing.
Cars don't, not for A R P?
Can it not go for anything at this point? Right, but I'm usually sure if he doesn't-
Oh, oh, you did that actual calculation, okay.
We use revenue replacement, so we're limited.
Oh, that's what-
Because we didn't fall under the loss revenue calculations.
Okay, so the B goals cut out.
So it's-
Well, I thought it was all released now to be used for, unfortunately, it is not. If you received over a certain amount, you had to comply with the higher level of reporting and compensation.
So I still have to report the same one, yeah, so we're limited.
Fiber?
The fiber would fall.
Sure.
The fiber, yeah, yeah.
Okay.
Ready to move?
I, can I just make one comment before you? Cause it sounds like to me you're wanting to remove these contracts for, uh, PR, and what I'll tell you is, and y'all can ask yourself the same question, what's the number one comment you get from constituents, and it's always gonna be, I didn't know that was happening. And we have been very effective at getting out things like the road program, public meetings, uh, the, the jail project. We've used that medium to get out an awful lot of information that people would not have had otherwise. And they don't listen to our meetings, and they can tell you they're gonna listen to their recordings at least, but the general public doesn't do that. But they do see the press releases.
That's something we can address or go back to, but I think we need to move on here pretty soon, we got a couple of other budgets.
Yeah, cause we're gonna get a surveyor.
Yeah, yeah.
Are we doing that today?
Yes, today.
So, was this thing-
Yesterday. I know.
I apologize.
No, no.
Any questions before I enter?
Thank you.
I got an appointment.
No, go ahead, go ahead, thank you.
Thank you, Jeff.
So please, go ahead, I'm sorry, John.
He was just saying thanks.
Oh, thank you. If we, so we would do everything minus, we would do everything minus the, the salaries nationally, but we don't, but anyone else in the case of the, the commissioners, because there's so many other things included in that, that we kind of, they're like, you know what I mean?
But remember that we can always come back and address something else that we, so choose.
Go back.
You don't have to prove any of it today.
Okay.
Yeah, I think they're more-
Sometimes you tell us, we've gotta prove-
Some of the stuff, I think makes sense, where if, if we know it's not gonna be any changes, we should, but-
Maybe we should wait on this one, cause I think we need to figure out what we're doing with NeoGov, plus I think-
That's fine.
There's twenty thousand in training that was allocated to that, and so it might be something that we divide, but-
You still have two million dollars, and it's, and it, and I'm just not saying, looking at the large stuff, maybe it's already stuff that's budgeted, that needs to be looked at to see if it can be reduced.
Reduced.
I mean, some of these items are, have been the same, ongoing.
Right.
Is, can we take, you know, it's not just the big things we need to work to look at, or we look at those, but yes, we need to look at the ones that are also staying the same, and those change.
I mean, we go, you, I mean, Sherri, now, you go back to it, I, I, I look at, um, you bring up, you, you, you brought up legal, that was two hundred and eighty thousand dollars. And the request to move it up to a carry amount was for the jail project, I remember Jeff came by during the budget workshop and said, hey, we need to increase this amount, because there's gonna be a lot going on with the jail project.
Sure.
Making sure that the bonds and stuff are done.
It's at four hundred.
That's why it's so high now, but now, the jail project is passed.
Yeah.
But I mean, that's, it, it, it's a significant chunk. How do you, that's, that's such a large amount, looking at it historically, it's never been over two A.
Okay.
So that, that's another one, and then to, to your point, Debbie, there's some other, there's some other big ticket items.
You don't like to go line by line?
But it-
And this, this isn't the setting to do it, I mean, that should be something that you guys do as your homework, is go line by line and say, okay, they have, example, thirty thousand dollars for office supplies, they don't, but do you need that for office supplies? Can you only use twenty?
No.
It's those, the rest of our offices, the smaller ones, have had to do that.
Right.
Yeah.
For the last three years.
Your mark.
We have been asked to cut ten percent, this budget is never asked to cut anything.
So, and you just got rid of fifteen thousand for payroll services, so. We're, we're ahead of that.
Well, and like I said, in the, the training line, twenty thousand of that was gonna be allocated for NeoGov, so that may be reduced by twenty thousand, depending on what we do with it.
So we're up thirty-five.
Yeah, well, I even look at, I think they-
There's just things you can do.
There, there, there need to be, I agree with you, Debbie, you, you are right, there, there need to be cuts made, we need to go back and do our homework, but I think in, to Ken's point, being con- conscious of time, there are other folks that we probably need to get up, if we, if we approve this, I'm sorry, nobody's approved this. We, we have our information, we can come back.
Ask questions.
Ask questions.
The next budget's on this one.
Okay. Okay.
So we, we do our homework, so then we got good questions.
Yeah. Uh, Tim, Donnie, anything else from you? Nothing, thank you guys for coming today.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Here we go.
Ah, here.
What we can do is ask, did they do our homework?
We saved the best for last, thank you.
Did you bring that blueberry? Hey, Debbie, listen, can I tell you?
Who made it? Oh, we've had it before.
Oh, you have had it? Oh my gosh.
It was here yesterday.
She basically tells me, she's like, she's like, I got fresh pink blueberries.
Hey, hey Debbie, I've been eating on it two days.
They sent it to the clerk's office.
They were like, we like Melissa.
Send it to Melissa?
Carol, thank you so much for your patience, the floor is yours, ma'am.
So, looking at our budget, this year, well, so, let's look at the bottom part first. So, we don't have any changes, if you don't, don't look at the salaries, but look below, we don't really have any, we don't have any changes this year. Um, one of the comments that I will have is, we still have the phase two stormwater management, that fifty thousand, I'll give you an update on that, that's that MS four, that's the program through I D M. Last year we came before you and explained to you that we were gonna be pulled back in to the phase two MS four, so we budgeted for fifty thousand. Our intent was to go down to I D M and plead our case, uh, we did go down earlier this year and pleaded our case, uh, originally, we were told that we would get out of it, but then when they heard that Boot County was the fastest growing county in the state, they said, wait a minute, we're not gonna let you out of it. So we went down there, we did a bunch of work, uh, we worked with Chris from FERC, uh, spent a small amount of money to go down and actually set, show them that, no, Boot County's not the one that's really growing, it is Leavenin', it is the lead, everything's being annexed, and those entities are already within the MS four. So to pull us in wasn't quite fair, didn't meet the intent of, of their ordinance or that MS four requirement. We have been told through the phone that we were going to be able to get out of it, but we have not received that letter yet, and until we receive that letter, I would like to leave that fifty thousand in, hopefully, once that go, you know, we're told that we don't, then we can drop that number back significantly. I'm, I'm saying, if, if we could get that letter before you guys actually finish, we could drop that number to around ten thousand.
How, how soon do you anticipate them giving you a response, like a formal response, like?
They should have by now.
It shouldn't happen by now.
I mean, because we were verbally told, I think in April maybe?
Right.
Maybe the end of April, first of May, definitely where we're told, we've inquired about it, honestly, I don't wanna push them too far on it, because I'd want them to turn around and say, well, you're, you're in, okay? Because fifty thousand, like we explained to, Ken explained to you last year, fifty thousand isn't even gonna touch that.
To drop in the bucket, what's it gonna cost this county if it was?
We've been out of this program, we, uh, we're first in it back when it started, um, ten thirteen years ago. Uh, we ran it for probably three years or so, we've been out of it for, I believe, ten years now, we asked for a waiver, we're granted that. So we've just been kind of flying under the radar here, I mean, it's, it's a good hundred thousand dollars each, I'm saving.
I, I, I remember that, I guess what I would, Debbie, I guess we can just advertise this again as is, and if they get the letter before then, just take it away?
Yes.
Okay.
But I don't, and our intent is not to take it away, we would just like-
I mean, reduce, reduce.
Just sit down to, to ten thousand.
To ten thousand?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yep.
I see that, uh, I got the phase two stormwater, what else do you have?
The only other thing that I have would go back to the top, I know you guys don't wanna talk about salaries, but I'm gonna be like Nick, and I'm gonna say, let's talk about salaries. So, our office is, you know, I, I sent everybody a letter, and I hope that Sherri got that letter in response to what I'm asking. I'm not asking to increase other than the five percent or whatever you give to everybody else, but what I am asking is that our office be allowed to go to forty hours a week. So that does make an increase in what that would be, and it was a twenty, just over twenty-seven thousand, if you budget off of what the pay is right now. I talked to you, Aaron.
I was about to say, you, you had a great explanation, I think the rest of the council-
You, I mean, like Nick said, when, all this stuff's going on, as far as what's in White East Towns, like in Leavenin', that doesn't take our office out of it, it just adds more to ours. Because we actually are sitting on each one of these technical advisory committees, um, we spend lots of hours trying to go through and do this, we are doing all the inspections for legal drains. When something's annexed into the city, we do not lose, you know, I know if, if it gets annexed, but Nick, he's gonna lose the streets. We don't lose our legal drains, our legal drains are our legal drains, we are still in charge of maintaining those. We've gotta also protect also for those strings, we've got Great Creek here in Leavenin', we've got, now we've gone out to Lily, which is Spring Creek. They're gonna be adding impervious areas out there, that we have to make sure that they are not overloading the system that we have, so we have to maintain those. So, our contractors are working more hours, I need my drain inspectors to be out there while this stuff's going in the ground and watching, we're working with engineering company. We need to kind of be on the same kind of schedule, and the highway department's working forty hours, I view my guys kind of just like their guys, we need to switch to that forty hours.
Uh, I appreciate that, I agree, I think the other part too is, what gave me a little, not a little, gave me a lot of concern is, you didn't have it, and I know some of your folks were skipping lunch and working through time, just because they didn't have it, you didn't have the means to do it, I don't think that's, I don't think that's right.
I mean, it's honest that, I don't think anybody will disagree, that we're here past hours, our guys are, you know, they're, they're saying that they took an hour lunch.
You know.
Or a half hour, I, I have, actually, right now, we have been letting them go ahead and, we've got time clock plus now.
Right.
So we're not writing down our time, we're actually clocking in, so it's showing up, I told you guys that that would happen when you guys went to time clock plus, it's gonna show up the true hours people are working, so. I am allowing them to not have to set out the field for one hour, twiddling their thumbs, they need to be out there watching the contractors install that pipe, they need to get to the next job for that service to that homeowner that's called it, we need to be able to be there for the public, so, um, right now, I have three thousand dollars in overtime. We are, I think, have the, calculated, we started actually letting them have more time, instead of an hour for lunch, they're taking a half hour for lunch out there going. So, those extra jobs, things that we need to get done, I'm letting them do some overtime, that is going to be completed very quickly.
Nope.
I, I think we're halfway through it, and we're only halfway through the year, and I didn't even, we didn't even start doing that until like the last few months. So, that's, that's my request, and I, I, I have a feeling, if we continue this way, unless I take them back and, and back to the thirty-five, I am gonna be coming requesting to move some monies, um, out and around to be able to support the rest of the year for the overtime.
I appreciate that, I would just say, Debbie, if, whatever we do with her number from an overtime standpoint, we'll just tack that, I guess, based on a three or five percent, we'll have to take it up again if we did that. Cause you're basing your overtime, cause you don't, cause-
Well, I'm not, I'm not feeling like I'm gonna need more overtime next year, if we go to the forty hour week.
Cause it'll balance out.
I would stay at three thousand.
Okay.
Because I'm gonna hold them to that, I mean, there, there might be a time or two that, you know, if a contractor's out there working until five o'clock, and it's a very important job that they need to stay on,
Okay.
then I'm gonna have them stay on that job.
Do we, how do we, do we just move people to the four-year work, how do we do that?
Do we need commissioner approval?
I was about to say, how do we?
I love this idea, and if you have, if you have seven people in an office, and they all work an additional five hours a week, there's thirty-five hours, there's another employee that we're not having to hire and pay all these benefits for, so I think this is a great idea.
And, and I, I had presented it to the commissioners and talked to them, and they knew that I was coming before you guys asked for the forty hour week. I didn't get any negative feedback from them at all on it, so.
Okay.
And I have asked all the staff, obviously, the, the outside workers, they're, they're fine with it, and I also asked Kathy and Terry if they would be willing to go to that. You know, one of the things too is, I know that Eric had, he's really concerned about Terry and her salary. He did quite a bit of research showing me, um, that he feels like she's underpaid.
She's the IT person, or GIS, GIS person.
And I know that she's putting in hours, but she's not, not turning into, so, I mean, we know that, um.
Look, and, and I, I can't-
This would get her up to that beat.
I can't vote on this budget, cause I am helping out a little bit in the surveyor's office, as the past county surveyor, I can tell you, my imp- As the past County Surveyor, I can tell you, my employees, I was there for thirty-two years, and I actually, kind of old school, you know, when, when I started a job, kind of like the Sheriff's Department, when, back in the old days, you worked a lot more than the hours that, and you didn't think anything about it.
You just did it.
You just did it. Carol and Kathy, there has been many times they've worked over, in the past, we didn't even have overtime. We tried to keep track of comp time, it didn't work. Carol put in far more hours than she was ever paid, uh, and, and there's been times where Terry's working stuff, and our, our employees just have done it, uh, in the Surveyor's Office. So, what Carol's asking, I think, really legitimify, legitifies what they have done in the past, and actually really protects the county going forward too.
Does Terry need to do eight to five? What if she stayed at eight to four and I picked up?
Well, I think, you know, we, we, we just look, go ahead.
I mean, our intent is not to go past eight fours, to actually work the eight four, but I know that she's actually, I, I would just like for her to stay in line with us. Um, and probably what she would do is just take the half hour lunch, and then she might be here fifteen minutes early, fifteen minutes late. My theory kind of is too with the county, it's kind of weird because if you work at a bank, the bank opens at eight o'clock in the morning, closes at four, your workers don't come in at eight o'clock and start as soon as they, I mean, they come in early and they get started, because, you know, when the public's here at four o'clock, we don't kick them out the door.
Yeah.
Um.
At least you don't.
We don't. We're usually here and somehow they all find their way to our office and everybody else leaves them, you know, and that's fine, but, you know, we, we just take care of the people. We want to make sure, if there's a phone call that comes in, or we need to call somebody after four o'clock, we're doing it. Our people are actually, I have one that, you know, he's answering phones at five, six o'clock on the clock when they're calling. Should he be? No, we probably shouldn't, because that, she should be off the clock at that point.
But he, but he does, no.
But it's, it's dedication, and it's great that we have employees that are like that.
Nope.
I don't want to lose them though, if, if we're not paying them for the, you know, for the time they're putting in.
No, I, I appreciate it. I think a conversation, giving the Commissioners a moving to the forty hour, sounds like a majority of all of ours pretty much in support of that. Uh, I see where the Phase Two Stormwater, uh, is there anything else in the budget?
Motion to approve minus salaries.
And a second.
Second.
All those in favor say aye. Aye, opposed, no.
No, I'll, I'll come.
She's doing soil and water real quick.
I'm doing soil and water and drainage board.
Just tell me the front number.
Oh, oh, six, three?
Which one are you doing first?
Drainage, yes, yes, drainage board.
Oh, six, three.
Just twenty-five dollar change in office supply?
Exactly, that's it.
Is that it?
That's it.
I don't know.
You could use that twenty-five dollars.
We've got two million to cut.
Nick, you can say.
I say no, because I didn't get a blueberry cow.
It's not gonna.
Debbie, Debbie, I'm right there with you.
Twenty-five dollars.
Are the board members, is that considered a salary, or do we vote on that?
We can vote on it, we don't.
But we don't change the amount of it.
We don't, they don't, they're not increasing.
Remove, approve this budget as presented then.
All those in favor say aye.
Is it oh, seven, five, oh? Is it oh, seven, five, oh?
Yes.
Okay.
This one, I think you ought to eliminate.
Well, I was going to ask, I'm being serious.
Oh.
Tell us why.
Wait, is this the line that you always tell him that there's money in it that he needs to give back?
No.
Yeah, no, this is different.
He invested that, he gave me a.
I'm there. So, tell us, tell us, you do want to get rid of that?
Well, what we have, um, what we come to, I represent the, I'm chairman on Soil and Water Board. So, what we come and ask for is, the Commissioners have always been gracious enough since it started, seventy-five years ago, basically to allow two employees to be working in a soil and water department. So, the other, and from, well, then we ask, that's given by the grace of the Commissioner and then we ask for additional monies to operate basically the office. And that's worth like nine, nine thousand nine hundred dollars is out, that's what we ask for.
Okay.
So, but we're always at the grace of those who, you know.
So, what, what is the money used for?
The, the ninety-nine hundred that we ask for is just to maintain office. That's, you know.
But, but we're paying for two salaries.
Yes, yes.
Two salaries are, are directly out of, uh.
Sixty, fifteen?
Out of County General.
Right.
So, where would it go if we delete them?
That's what I was saying, we get rid of it, where the salaries go?
They would be gone.
You would not have it.
So, right now, they're, they're down one employee.
We are down one employee.
So, so there's only one employee that technically that's there.
We have an office administrator, and we have one.
Had, had a field crew person.
Natural resource conservation, that seems working on a contract basis, because he's retired, basically. So, we're in the process of trying to hire somebody.
I, I think this is one that we really discuss, uh, and I'm not saying we make a motion right now, right today, but I think it's something that we, we potentially will.
Dissolve it.
Could dissolve, but I just want to make sure that we explore everything before we just do it.
And there has been a conversation about how you can even, um, um, you know, we talked about a little bit, going up, how these people could, um, work in other departments to help them out too.
Not mine. Not it, not it, tells goes.
So, just so, just so I'm clear.
Like extension of this, and then things like that, how they could also assist with other departments that is related to their expertise, but then those other departments are not hiring people too. So, that, that's been.
So, it sounds like we have some homework.
We got some homework on it. This, as Kathy said, was started years ago. I actually worked, uh, as one of the field crew back years ago, thirty, thirty-five years. Uh, and, and it has completely changed the, for what it was intended for, because it was actually, the, the main focus was to help farmers, uh, with erosion control, uh, back in the day. And it was to assist the federal side of it, there's federal employees, and these people were there to assist the federal employees. And so, it, it's, its focus has changed, uh, to, uh, doing some stuff with the IDM, and, and now the IDM has almost cut soil and water out too, so, because they was actually doing inspections on for erosion control. Uh, but, you know, with all the cities actually having the MS fours, they're doing their own, uh, inspections that, that doesn't have to be done by soil and water, so their, their focus has actually shifted, so, you know, I, I wouldn't mind if Kathy takes it back to her board and says, you know, the council's really looking at cutting this, you know, how is it really going to truly affect us? And, and have them, tell us.
Cause this is what I was going to say, does your board have to make a decision if we, uh, dissolve this whole?
I think the, I think the board would actually stay intact as a Soil and Water Board, potentially, they just would not have any employees, they, they may not be able to function as, as much, and that's something that, that her board needs to tell us too.
What do you, how does your board meet?
Once a month.
When is your next meeting?
August.
After our council meeting?
Yes.
Well, it makes sense if you all came back, I don't know, it sounds like.
Maybe I have a emergency council meeting, I mean, emergency meeting for her board, not, not council meeting.
I mean, if you are.
You're not blinding, you're not blinding?
No, we have the council.
I'm just wondering if you all came back, Kenny, I mean, you says, you, you know a lot, it may just be easier if you came up, came back to the council with a one-page solution. Instead of us trying to figure it out, you all know it, and just say, hey, here's a proposal. Yeah, like, yeah, but here's a proposed solution, that way we like, all right, if you all agree to it, it makes sense. No sense in all of us, I don't want to.
So, we'll revisit this one?
So, at this time, I think we just revisit this one, so I don't think there's any action at this point in time, except for, I'll work with them.
Okay. Any other ones from you?
That's it.
Thank you.
Do you have a motion to revisit this?
Okay, we are going to do a quick, uh, pre-count, put our time together and make a plan for August. So, in August, we have two days on hold, and it would be good to get a sense of what we need to do with that time, if we need both days or not.
What if there's a second day?
It is after the council meeting on the field for the county.
I don't know. Don't you worry about lunch.
Um, so, being into that also, this will also be the meeting, I've got to have numbers.
These are decision making.
These are, this, August is decision making.
Sure.
There have to be numbers, because we have to advertise on the thirty-first of August.
We'll, we'll have what numbers?
I could, I could tell you.
We'll have an idea.
I could tell you that their meeting schedule, thank you Brittany for helping, or PS Lit already for the week after next, so we should have, hopefully we'll have an update to provide to you all at the council meeting.
I can participate in those.
Myself, Kenny Haines, and Sherry Ritchie, and then we're going to pull in, uh, probably you and Jennifer, Kevin, and we're going to split it up. But I don't know the person that is, whatever they, who covers the comp, thirty-first, with Debbie, and Debbie's in all of us. And then Tony has Mike Piger, uh, I want to be working, I have meetings aligned with the district municipalities on the E nine, E nine one one.
Oh, Communications.
Communications.
Right.
So, I'll take those, I'll provide them back. So, I know that for PS Lit, and then, then that we'll figure it out by big updates every one.
Does it make sense to include in that discussion, we can meet with municipalities on nine-one-one SROs?
I said to him, and whatever you want Mike to do, I mean, we could do it at a high level, I think, I think the hard part about that is, I think the conversation needs to happen with Zionsville Schools.
Yeah, well, Western Boone Schools.
Western Boone Schools. Yeah.
So, I, I can have those meetings with Superintendent Kaufman and Superintendent Ramey on it.
Because instead.
And I'm happy if you set those meetings and have a person come with me.
Cause if you give us numbers back, it could help. Cause I think one of the things is that those school corps collectively gave you a hundred and fifty thousand dollars more, that would essentially fund the two SROs that you needed, but it's still knowing what they would give you. The, the school funding is on a different schedule, on how they're funding.
I'm sorry, go ahead.
I think, they, they give their funding based on the numbers, children in attendance, like September fifteenth or sixteen.
Yeah.
Like, they, is that right, Sherry?
Uh, yeah, so, yeah.
They, like, there's a date that they have to have, and they submit that to the state, and then the state tells them, this is how much money you're going to get.
Right.
So, that's what they're going to probably take away for. But our numbers can be submitted, right, Debbie, before that to the state, so that's, that's a, that's a waiting season.
And then for Zionsville, I would maybe talk to the Zionsville Police Department, them providing that SRO versus us.
He's adding three.
You're not talking, we're not talking about Zionsville at this point in time, we're talking about Western Boone School.
There's no additional one for the Zionsville High School?
No, no.
That's for like the next year?
This is what I was explaining earlier, Grand Bell Wells is out on aisle five south, and we're talking about Western Boone High School.
Okay, I'm sorry, we were going to talk to, um, the new superintendent there, Kaufman, but, so you're looking at Zionsville for the twenty-five?
No, Zions.
For another SRO?
If we could add, that's what we're talking about, that's, that won't be until twenty-five.
Okay, got it, got it.
We could have a conversation before that, we need that. You want to add to Zionsville? I'd like, I mean, at some point, I would like to look at it, I'm not saying that you better, I would have ourselves do that, municipalities being so close, that could respond. Where we're at with Western Boone, we don't have anybody close to respond.
I thought you were working on, um, negotiating a more reimbursement from this school for Zionsville for the current.
For the current. That's, that was my understanding.
Okay, so, so that can still be part of, okay, got it.
The Zionsville PD has their, I'm in Chief Spears, they, they have a cut, they have three schools, they have a high school, he said that they have a cut. If you want to add after that, I think that's a two-year deal, but they have to cover.
They are adding three more.
They're adding three, each of them, but I'm in him on Monday.
That's awesome.
Okay, great, great, great. I've got a list, you all may have a list as well, and does that anything on your list?
That's mine.
Okay, so, just action items to carry over. Can you build up, figure that one out? Uh, ambulance meeting, we need to bring together the county, WISDOM, and municipalities, that's going to be a big one to figure out, and, uh, that meeting needs to happen sooner rather than later. So, do we have any volunteers from this board to join me in that effort?
The, for, for WISDOM?
You want to join us?
Well, ju, um, I think, what's your, they asked us to call for service that EMA is responding to, and like you were saying, if you could teach us that, just once you have a date that you need, once you talk with municipalities and WISDOM, so that'll be important.
Jim, Jim, Jim for not doing it.
Great, okay.
I would just tell you, like, we're going to, I'm still going to pull in out of the crowd, because we have some other numbers on runs that we looked at behind the scenes that we had to go through, but we've asked for, to Sherry's point, or to your point, unauthorized numbers, we can get those now, and I just want to know what, what that, what that is.
It is not reasonable for them to expect us to make decisions based off of twenty-twenty-one numbers, not at all.
It's, it's, so much has changed. So, and if I, if I can't, you want to step in for me, Kenny?
No, I, I'd rather Sherry.
Okay, sure, if I can't, then you?
Sure, I thought you were.
I mean, we were, I'm saying if I can't, we got, I, we.
No, I, I don't, I don't mind.
So, we've got Erin, Jennifer, and me, and all of each other, get this meeting put together with WISDOM, with Mayor Gentry, and with Chief Bass.
I'm sorry, I wouldn't do that.
You wouldn't do that?
I wouldn't do that. With them, I think WISDOM owes us financials first. Then I would go back and talk to, I talked to Mayor Gentry already, and he, he knows what the ask for TMS may be, we shouldn't talk to him until we know what WISDOM is going to tell us.
I want to see their twenty-twenty-two.
That's what I want to do.
Budget, like, planned, actual.
She, I would like, they were going to give it until August, and then we could.
They have.
No, they, we don't, they, we don't have to wait for. I don't have to wait.
Crow.
But we don't have to wait for an audit, like, they have a twenty-two budget that they've been operating under, and a twenty-twenty-three year to date, we need to see that.
And they have board.
They obviously have it, because she said she'd be in the meeting with Jeff.
She didn't, she had, she, I know she, I'm sorry. She, she has, she, I know she, I'm sorry.
She wants to give us their audit. I want their year to date.
Would you please lead this, uh, her?
She said leave.
Lead.
Oh, I was like, sure.
It's blue, it's blue. It's not crow, it's blue. I, I would do this, I, I know the number. We went through it. I know the number, but it's different.
Okay, Jennifer's leading this. Erin, you're leading.
She's either leading or leaving.
I didn't think it was that official.
And you're leading SRO figuring out what we can do there.
I think Kenny has now what we just talked about.
Soil and water.
Soil, Kenny has soil and water.
Great. And timeline for the Justice Center?
You and Kenny.
And you and I, connect with the commissioners?
And John Ryan is going to figure out how to make the, how to make the budget balance. Right, John?
Okay, also, we want to start with a list of all the new requested employees, unless we already have that going on with your office, out of the crown.
I can go through.
Karen can go through. Do you have a list already?
Uh, no, I have to go through my book.
Okay, so.
I can email it out.
That would be great. Please do that.
Can you, can you tell us where we're at right now?
I think we shipped it to three thousand dollars.
Yeah.
So, you're at two point three?
One, so we know. It's, it's still around two point two million. So, we. And, and, and you're out of balance on the budget. It's not that you can't fund that much.
We're just out of balance. We want a balanced budget.
Yeah. Except for the one-offs. If there are one-offs, and we can identify those.
I mean, the one, the one right now that still doesn't look fundable is PS.
We're going to figure that out.
But you guys are going to figure that out.
Did you take, did you take the vehicles out of that?
I took the vehicles out.
Took the vehicles out.
But I think there's still possibly problems in this workbook version. So, they gave me all of the, what each department turned in. So, I want to check back against all of those, because I'm afraid some of those maybe are still, it's a whole thing.
Can we get new workbooks for August?
No, you can't. It's, it's, it's not possible.
Kurt acted mad. We made him re-run it so we could print them.
Right. It's not possible.
He ran a, he ran a workbook that's four hundred and thirty-four pages, and I had to go through and sift out the ones.
And the reason is, because we already made the notes.
There are notes in there.
And we marked it, and we're not rewriting this.
And it's on the shared drive too.
Can, just mark out what's wrong. I have a few more things for the list.
Well, if you want them to fix them, I do, go ahead, Jennifer.
Um, we still need to come back to Office three sixty-five licensing.
Me and Sean are meeting on that, right?
Yeah, sure.
I mean, we, we can meet on it, or we can leave everybody in threes, because that's what we might suggest. So, we can meet on it and talk about it.
Let's, let's, let's pull this through.
Okay.
If we're not going to do E five, I, I don't have a problem not doing E five.
We need an alternative.
We need to, yeah, that's all.
I'm good with that.
We need confirmation from commissioners on the sixty thousand for the fiber.
I feel like you said yes verbally.
I think you did.
Oh, okay, okay.
He said it shouldn't be a problem.
He said it shouldn't be a problem.
That was a yes.
That was.
We involve with the coroner about vehicle expenses repair versus other options.
I sent him, I sent him an email about it, just as, hey, FYI.
I think this is part of, I, if, so, there's two things on clerk election, if we have time. And then one of those is related to salaries, but we really need to have a discussion on the stipend.
Yes, we do.
Yeah. And then I just, I realize it's only fifteen hundred dollars, but I would like to point out something with line item weight proof in our budget yesterday, because I'm still bothered by it.
Solid base has, okay, with the reimbursement agreement?
They did say okay?
Yes, Jennifer said she put in a.
Perfect.
Excellent, yes.
And I, what is that, thirty, what did you say?
Uh, three thousand, uh, and, uh, I already sent Debbie the numbers.